Which one?
Uh, well, my son is watching the Bears, but I think he has some kind of different cable in very long. I think the Bears are on CBS.
Sir, when you're ready, I think we can begin.
With the Eagles. Did you see the Eagles?
All right.
Unfortunately, that was supposed to be.
And you have sign in three, two.
And...
This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council come to order. Your clerk will call, okay?
Miss Elder, here. Dee Perkypile absent with notice. James DeVito.
Here.
Uh, Mickey Snyder.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Trey McClan.
Here.
We have five.
Mr. Weaver will not be with us tonight. He apparently is not going to take a chance to get his feet injured again, so we are without counsel. So if you please stand, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Move this on to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, I have two issues to add to it, and you don't have the paperwork to match this. This will be a, uh, two resolutions. One is for the parking lot lease for the courthouse parking lots, and the next one is for the city offices downstairs. So add those two, the number seven and number eight, on the new agenda of the new business. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to table until January, number one, under unfinished business. Their attorney plus them could not make it tonight because of the weather, and I would like to table until January, the amended land bank ordinance, because we need the city attorney here for that.
Okay. Let's back up to the first one and get a second on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Now, number two?
Number three, yeah.
No, second.
Please, did you get the second one to you?
Number three, unfinished.
Okay. Okay. Any further? Mr. Mitchell?
Under new business, number two, hours of operation, and number four, conditional use permit for farm animals, which I think we're postponing anyway because of planning.
Number two first, I'll give you a second.
Okay.
It's already postponed.
And I guess number four, we're still going to postpone?
Yes. Apparently it already is. I have it. Marked already.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. DeVito?
Uh, I've had calls and emails today about people unable to attend regarding multifamily second reading. I would move to table that to our next agenda, to our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that, too. I got calls on that one also.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up also.
Okay, so...
Number, there's which?
Number four, under unfinished business.
Yeah. The building inspector isn't here either, is he?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Uh, number seven, under unfinished business. I had placed in everybody's boxes copies of the state's ordinances regarding an auditorium commission. It's about five pages. Uh, since this is new information, I would like to postpone that item to our next meeting in order for council to look over the state regulations and see if they want to incorporate any of those into the ordinance that was given to us by the city attorney.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further?
Table on that one, too.
All right. Let me make sure we're on full speed here. Unfinished business, number one postponed. Number three unfinished business postponed. Number four unfinished business postponed. Number two...
Number seven.
Number seven.
I'm sorry. Okay, so there's four, and unfinished business. Uh, number two, new business postponed. Number four, new business postponed. Is that correct?
Number three.
Correct.
Okay.
Wait.
Yeah, let's go ahead and...
Move forward.
New business, number three. We'll just hold on so everybody gets a chance to read the attorneys...
New business?
Uh, new business. Everybody will get a chance to read the attorney's changes.
I'll second that.
Okay. We're going to have a short agenda then.
Well...
Anybody else want to postpone that anyhow?
What else?
Yes. Number six?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll second that one.
Next one?
Six, under new business. She's not able to be here.
Oh. Y'all want to pick up number six and just get a second one? Just let y'all?
Second.
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Mitchell, second.
Oh, the film industry, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We didn't hear from Plank.
Do we hit? No.
Plank, because I'm wondering if number five, if we need to wait until we have somebody here from Plank.
Number five, under four. Oh, new business?
New business, I'm sorry.
Oh, procedures are vacating.
Do we have paperwork?
We gave that before, yeah.
Yes. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if we needed to have them here or not.
Well, let me see. What else do we have to talk about?
Anybody else? Okay. So that leaves us to number two unfinished, number five unfinished, and number six unfinished. Number one, new business. Number five, new business. Number seven and number eight, new business. Yes, sir?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Motion carried. Amendment agenda is accepted. Um, next will be approval of the minutes for November the 25th, 2013. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Commission committee authority reports inspired terms. We don't have anybody here from any of the commissions that I know of. Uh, Mr. Richard, have to throw in something. Uh, Bruce. Bruce? Okay. See if there is anybody out there, just perchance.
Is that Bruce here?
Bruce is here.
Does he want to talk what's going on, make, explain the clarification?
I haven't seen him now, but apparently.
Bill Featherstone sent some emails to us.
Yeah, to take while the way through them.
The dean is checking on it, so.
Actually, it wasn't on that topic, we were lying.
So we're going to short here on the agenda, isn't it?
I guess it's happened, yeah.
What are we talking about? Yeah, we have a, we have a new version of Nut Street, okay.
Okay, no public comment. Bruce and Bill Featherstone was here about that.
Oh, they were? Okay.
Well, we got tabled.
Yeah, yeah, untabled.
Because we didn't know when he was here.
Okay, want to untable it?
I thought you guys said...
Okay. We need a motion to untable it.
Well, we're going to wait and see if they want to. We didn't know they were out there.
They said not making.
Okay.
Yeah.
Smart, smart.
Go in the house. Okay. Uh, we have no commission reports, no public comments. It brings us into unfinished business. Number two, the ordinance 2191 be third read.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito?
I'll move to suspend rules and place ordinance number 2191 on its third reading by title only. Second.
All right, stand by.
Trey McClan.
Yes.
James DeVito.
Yes.
Chris Elder.
Yes.
Mickey Snyder.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
Five zero.
Mr. Mitchell?
This was the one...
Yeah, we got it. Sorry.
Ordinance number 2191, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code to establish an additional conditional use by permit in quiet use commercial C3 zones.
Yes, sir.
Before we approve that, it's not by conditional use, it's by permitted use, and we had on September the 23rd, by a vote of six to zero, voted to make that a permitted use, not a conditional use. And I sent that to Tim Weaver and said that we, that that ordinance is the wrong ordinance. And at the last time, he said he would take care of that. And I copied Anne on it, but I, we've had a, we've just had a lot going on.
Okay.
But it's, it's not by conditional use, because if you go back to the minutes of September the 23rd, you'll find that the council voted to make it permitted use on a vote of six to zero.
Is she getting paper towels on?
Don, especially when you get some stuff, he's got some in his office, he ain't here. He'd be approximately maintenance man. He should be fully prepared to do something. There he is. Right there by...
It's, it's being on the floor.
Okay. We can't have that during council meeting. How inappropriate.
This, this has not been a good week.
Yeah, better hurry up or it'll freeze.
Or a good day.
Yeah. Probably need to...
Daily water.
You bet, man.
Throw me a cup of water here.
Uh, while we clean this up, court's going to be at the minutes, and, uh... September the 23rd, okay. George, you're allowed one drop of water now. You're going to have to squeeze your pants out.
Probably not. I don't think it's still... Well, let's not give me a second chance to do that.
Okay. Right out, right out in the middle, right here. There's a pond. There you go. This table will be cleaned.
There we go. Oh.
Don, you might want to give her a pile and let her lay that. No, really, I mean, the paperwork she has on the bottom is soaking wet, so she needs to lay it on top of this. Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah.
Oh, dear. Okay.
Are you in a spill cup, so we're okay?
Yeah. Yeah, mine's closed, except for my drink.
There you go.
Oh, this is...
Okay, we are, we're still in session, but the clerk's going to get the minutes. Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, this is all stuff we're ever going to talk about anyhow?
Very fun.
Don, do you still stay home?
Is this yours or mine?
Okay. I'm already just minutes into the, uh, the video here. Says ordinance for intimate theater in C3 is conditional use. Mr. Perkypile moved to discuss. Mr. Mitchell seconded it in response to the question of what would happen with the currently operated theater. If the ordinance passes, Mr. Weaver opined status would not change unless they came back and applied. He noted there had been no citations. The theater would not be grandfathered. There would be problems with the court, unfortunate. It would be addressed by citation. It could be addressed by citation and judge's decision. Discussion followed regarding conditional uses and neighborhood input, permanent permitted uses, and possibly changing the ordinance to grandfather the existing theater. Ms. Elder suggested removing the need for a CUP and noted movies are shown in the library annex, which has no parking. Ms. Blankenship said the planning's efforts was to try to make the theater work legally. Mr. Mitchell made a motion to remove conditional use and make the intimate theater definition as written by the attorney a permitted use. Mr. McClan seconded it. Motion carried in six zero here. Okay. So shall it be?
So, since we've had a second reading of the title only that said conditional use was wrong, and since we just read for third reading, second reading, third reading, that it was wrong, how do we correct that?
We'll go, what the minutes say?
Okay.
I would say it would be as a permitted use.
Yes, but I just wanted to, since we've read it twice, that way, how, you know, just to be...
Well, actual facts take precedence over the, uh...
Okay.
permitted.
What is incorrect, so. We'll go back to what the minutes say, since that was, you had approved the minute, so apparently that is, is now record, so we'll go back and stick with the record.
Okay. So the new reading of the title will strike conditional use per, and have permitted use?
Yes, it should have.
Establishing additional permitted use in question.
We'll strike it, reread it.
Thank you.
And that's a re, the new. All right. We're for a second read, or a first read on the amended corrected version? We'll get it right in a minute, the amended corrected version. Okay, here we go.
Okay, the amended title for 2191 is an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code to establish an additional permitted use in quiet use commercial C3 zones.
Okay, and...
Motion to approve, uh, ordinance 2191 on the third and final reading.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, all right, sorry. We have, we have a third reading we have to do.
Yeah, you can get this read, Don, you need...
But we will. Okay.
Miss Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Miss Snyder?
Yes.
Four one?
Okay. All right. Move this on to number five, uh, second read of ordinance 2191. Motion to discuss. I'm sorry, 2199, second read.
Motion to discuss, second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito?
I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2199 on its second reading by title only. Second.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Miss Snyder?
Yes.
Miss Elder?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five zero. Ordinance 2199, an ordinance vacating portions of an unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue.
Mr. Weaver?
Since there's not many opposition to that, uh, which is unique for Eureka Springs, I would, uh, move to place ordinance number 2199 on its third reading by title only.
Same.
Okay. All right, stand by for a vote.
Yeah, we voted the second and we read it, didn't we? Yeah. Yeah. So I'll just say, go ahead, let's do the third one.
Mr. McClan, it's the second.
Have we voted?
No, I'm just, we haven't voted yet, no. I'm on the third reading.
Okay, second.
We didn't vote on the second one either, did we?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah.
I thought we voted just to read it.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Did we vote to approve it?
Uh, there was no vote to approve the second reading.
Oh, all right. I move to approve ordinance number 2199 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Yes. One second. Third one will have to be, uh, real call.
Okay, let me try that again.
Try it again.
Uh, move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2199 on its third reading by title only.
Excuse me?
Second.
Can we back up? Need a voice vote on your motion to approve, and Mr. Mitchell's, there was no, there was no vote, yeah. We just need a voice vote to approve.
Well, I'm on the third reading.
I thought we did that.
You suspended the rules. There was the reading, the second reading of the title. Then, a motion to approve the second reading, and that's the vote we need.
I thought we had a voice vote.
That's what we just did. We just did that.
But we just did the second reading.
We'll do it again.
It was the vote.
It was five, did you?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll, I'll adjust it one more time.
Now, we're working on suspension on third. Okay, suspension of rules, third read. We'll do that real call.
I'm confused.
We get it right.
That's okay.
We're right so far.
We'll get it so far, yeah.
Okay, this is on reading by the, the third reading by title only. Miss Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Miss Elder?
Yes.
Five zero.
You have to prove it before you know what it says.
A motion to approve.
Just a read.
Oh, yeah. Nope.
Ordinance 2199, an ordinance vacating portions of an unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue.
It's been locked in too much, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, right there.
Pretty good.
Not used to being in a room with all these people.
Okay, now.
Uh, I make a motion to, uh, to approve, uh, uh, ordinance number 2199, third reading.
Second.
All right, stand by for a real call.
Kevin Feeger has hit.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Miss Elder?
Yes.
Miss Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yeah.
Five zero.
Frankly, I don't care.
Mr. Weaver?
I will move to read the emergency clause.
Do a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, stand by.
Emergency clause, section two, whereas time is of the essence due to the petitioner's need for the title clarification regarding existing structures, and in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and affixing the signature of the city clerk and the mayor of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Thank you much. It is a done deal. All right, move this on.
Got you.
Thank you, Richard.
Drive carefully.
Okay, move this on to number six, uh, vacating, let me make sure I get this right, vacation portion of Nut Street property inscription clarification. Motion to discuss.
Same.
Second.
Floor's open?
Um, without the city attorney, I don't...
Well, we've got, the legal description has been amended.
Oh, it has been amended.
Yeah, so...
Somebody sent an email.
Yeah.
He, he sent us an email, he actually had copies of it.
That's what it said, it was okay.
Yeah, it, it shows the right board.
I've got a, a question. I have an ordinance, um, okay, the vacating unopened portion of Nut Street that, that is marked version 12 slash nine. Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's the current one that we're doing, because I seem to have three or four of those here. Okay, this is the business one, all right.
Mr. Mitchell?
So where are we having that discussion? Because as I recall, Palo Pinto had four or five people around it, and then Nut Street, isn't this the guy that, that was going to end up paying a whole bunch of money, because it was like, he had eight different lots, and it could have been 200, a lot, it was something, and is that what led us into the land bank thing?
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
No.
Go ahead, if you're going to ask.
It was approved. Uh, there is, there is the discussion about, uh, the dollars and cents of it all, and, uh, that's something that I want to bring up at the next meeting and try and change the way that's all done.
Has nothing to do with this.
But it had, no, we can go ahead and do this part of it, but the ordinance calls in there for, uh, you know, for, for a payment. Uh, but it's, you know, we can determine the $1 or whatever that needs to be.
Later.
Uh, yeah, because there's a, there's just a lot of inequity here, so.
Okay.
But as far as this part goes, it's fine.
Mr. DeVito?
I've moved to, uh, assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, stand by.
Ordinance number will be 2200. An ordinance vac...
No, uh, okay, it's what it was the last time, I think.
We haven't read Nut Street yet.
Well, how did it get 2200 on this last?
Well, it would have been, but we never...
Okay, maybe I just anticipated.
Okay, shut up.
Oh, there's a little, uh-uh.
Okay, let's go for 2200. Um, an ordinance vacating an unopened portion of Nut Street, whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the petition of the adjoining landowners to vacate the area defined by the following legal descriptions. A portion of Nut Street adjacent to the western line of the greeting block of the Riley and Armstrong survey of the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, and being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the west corner of Lot 1 of the greeting block, south 43 degrees, 24 minutes, 1 second west, for a distance of 30.7 feet; then, south 34 degrees, 7, excuse me, 14 feet, 59 seconds east, for a distance of 350.51 feet; then, north 44 degrees, 47 minutes, 18 seconds east, for a distance of 30.7 feet; then, north 34 degrees, 14 feet, 59 seconds west, for a distance of 350.51 feet, to the point of beginning. And whereas section 14.541042 of the Arkansas Code annotated allows the City Council to vacate certain streets, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the sections described above are hereby vacated, entitled as hereby vested and fee simple to the adjoining landowners for the sum of blank per landowner.
Motion to approve ordinance 2200 on its first read.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Does it legally matter if during the reading, feet and minutes were alternated? Doesn't matter?
It's what's written. It's not, it's not so much written.
No, minutes were, were on occasion. It gets highly confusing on this stuff.
Look at the clarification, go back over there.
Okay, but it doesn't matter, right?
I heard 15 minutes in there, but I, I didn't, I didn't see it.
It's a quarter of seven.
Okay.
I just wanted to verify, clarify, whatever.
Okay, I need, okay, these descriptions that are in this 12/9 version of Nut Street, these are the ones that the email from the attorney today said that the landowners and everybody agreed were the proper description?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is, it's been compared, and it's, it's, okay. So we're on legal ground here, okay.
Comments? Mr. McClan has made a motion to approve on first reading. Do a second?
Second.
Yes, David.
David, second, okay. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mark sign. Motion carried. Okay. All right, takes us out of old business into new business. Number one is appeal from planning commission for number one magnetic.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second, floor's open?
Uh, Mr. Perkypile isn't here, but the appealing or repellent or somebody is here. I'd like to allow Rachel Bricks to give a, uh, brief presentation. I am, I am a little confused, too, about this, I think, and maybe she can help clear it up, because I thought Parks said no, and then somewhere planning said no, and then I think, come on up to that mic. And then, uh, Rachel came and talked to us, and then at that time, I believe Ms. Bricks had brought up the issue of that the city really, in your view and your research, which was extensive, didn't really even own the property, and so, I don't remember what we did. Did we table it? Did we say no? Does anybody know?
You took, you...
You took, you voted to take no action.
Take no action, so, okay, so you're just, so now you're here appealing the planning commission part of it, since we took no action, right?
It's a separate issue.
Separate issue, okay, got it, thank, I'm just, okay.
No, I know, I know it's confusing, and I'm hoping to.
Clear it up?
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping.
Go ahead. You have the floor.
And I don't have a long presentation, like I usually do, it's under three minutes, actually. Just briefly, I, though, I do want to address a little bit of the history. Mr. Mitchell is correct in that we originally applied for a vacation through the Parks Commission, which we were denied for. Then we went to Planning, and it was a three to two vote to deny us for the vacation. Then we came to you folks. In between, starting really with my research from, in the vacation process, up through Planning, and finally by the time I'd gotten to council, that's when I kind of flipped the tables on you guys and confused the heck out of you, and said, well, I'm really not asking you for a vacation, I'm asking you to acknowledge that you don't own this strip of property. So it confused everybody, and for whatever, no action was taken. We decided, well, we're going to move forward with what we did, when we, we're going to move forward with what we wanted to do, and we originally bought the property, which was to develop it, et cetera, et cetera. So we went to HDC with a proposal for an idea for a cottage at our property, and they approved it unanimously, the design concept and everything was fine, and then I realized, obviously, we have to go to Planning. And that's where the, I'm going to kind of pick this up if I might, and I guess I should say who I am, I'm Rachel Bricks, this is my husband Ryan, and we live at One Magnetic. We are here because we have, there have been countless assumptions made about that strip of property, that strip of land that runs through our property, it actually bisects it. Although those assumptions may be unfortunate, they are now, A, preventing us from developing our property and potentially causing us loss of income, B, threatening to negatively impact the marketability of our property, and C, threatening to obscenely affect our right to safely access, use, and reasonably enjoy our property. And Planning has recently denied our application to build a cottage at our property solely based on the assumption that our driveway and part of our yard belong to the city, an assumption that was made and illustrated by the Planning Chair. In addition to Planning's unsubstantiated denial, both the Parks Director and Chairman of the Parks Commission have gone on record several times in recent months, expressing their certainty that not only is our driveway city property, but that they will be using it as a trail, as quote, "they have no other option." On that note, I would like to respectfully remind council that Parks, according to ordinance 1628, has at the city's pleasure jurisdiction over unopened platted streets according to public record. I challenge Parks' assumption that they have jurisdiction in this case on two counts. First, not only is it not a city street, but according to the deeds tracing back to 1884, the city has never even had an easement or made claims whatsoever to this strip of ground, and what's more, the city has never maintained it. Second, it already functions as open, it's functioned as open for over 120 years as the only access to this property. We use it multiple times a day, up and down, up and down, up and down. Not to mention, allowing, encouraging, and directing people and children to walk down a driveway as part of a trail is not only dangerous, it's absurd. So now Parks and Planning both, both city bodies, have gone on record declaring that our driveway belongs to the city. As a result, we have been and continue to be obstructed by both of these entities. However, the final declaration is yours to make. You may remember, we appeared before this council in August outlining several facts, documents, historical data, et cetera, to prove that the city has no interest in this strip of land, however, you decided to take no action. So ultimately, what we need is, we need council to determine whether or not the city has any rights to this strip of land so that we can proceed, A, with our plans to claim rightful ownership of this strip of land, B, to develop our property as we intended when we bought it, and C, to prevent a public trail from obstructing our right to access, use, and enjoy our property. And I realize I just would like to add, since Mr. Weaver's not here, I know that's kind of his arena to do that kind of stuff, but I guess I'm hoping that ultimately that you folks will direct him to do that, because I think that's what needs, well, I won't tell you, I don't know what needs to happen.
I'm not picking up on what you said, but in all honesty, when you brought up the issue of it not belonging to us, I thought that it needed legal clarification at that point. So I'd like to make a motion that, that council direct the city attorney to conduct a legal review of whether the city actually owns that piece of property or not.
Mr. McClung?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, a platted piece of property. A plat, subdivision plat, which that's what that is, with platted streets, it's a defined platted street. The city doesn't own it, the property owners own it, but the city has control of it as a platted street. And it's the same type of vacation on that street as it is with the street that they own. It's, it's all under their jurisdiction, and, and there's only a certain way that that can be handled. The, the street, this is common all over town, that the streets encroach on what, there's, there's houses, there are outbuildings, Palo Pinto, you know, it had that, it has a, they're all, they're, they're just all over the place. However, like the street that's going up, and I don't know if that's the one you're concerned about now, the one that you were trying to close before, but it's, it's a platted street, it's not been opened, but it can be. And so, if, if it's to serve other properties, I don't see how it can be closed. Now, the street in, in her yard, I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. It's unfortunate, but it's that way all over town. And the, the street is not owned by the city, but the, the city has complete control of that street, whether for right of ways and or for water lines, sewer lines, anything of that nature as well.
Mr. Mitchell?
Then that same argument would apply to Hartman and McCune Street, Nut Street, Magnetic Street, Palo Pinto Street? And?
Deer Lane where I live.
And that three, and Magnetic is not in the 320 acres, so we don't own that land, we just have right of way. But we're giving, we give away, sell, give away, whatever, a lot of other pieces of property. We just vacated Palo Pinto, we vacated several others, we're working on vacating Nut Street. So I'm, I'm still missing the argument why we can't vacate Magnetic Street, because Palo Pinto went down. Hartman Street, which we haven't discussed yet, we probably will at some point, is up there and has some concern, McCune. There's a lot of streets, I'm getting a little concerned about the moving, movement of the decisions that are being applied to vacating streets, and, and what I, I'm a little bit concerned about the consistency that we're using. I'm starting to get, and now we have to complicate it with all of a sudden this unknown master plan, which I, I do understand the green space and the master plan, for trails and all, but this, this whole thing is starting to bother me.
Ms. Schneider?
Rachel, could you refresh my memory in regards to, where the trails, when we were looking up at the woods and they were talking about the trail that Parks decided would come down through the yard and then in front of the door practically? Looking up at the wooded area, is there a possibility of a trail coming down the back part instead of down the middle of the property, coming down the back part, and is the only outlet going down the drive, or was there a back hillside? I couldn't remember.
Here is the end of... Here's our property. We almost 100% surround this certain property I'm referring to. This picture here, back up here, is right about, right there, where our property begins. It comes down this way, going down this way, and comes right through here, and actually connects right through here, I had done the orange things where this had said they were, comes right through here, 15 feet of this is our, actually, our yard, and the other just barely 15 feet is where we use to get our cars up to our house. So there is nowhere to go. And then as it continues to go down, here, here's, here's our house approximately right in the middle there, as it continues to go down, here's what you're looking at, and that, that is it, that's it. They'd be walking right down.
Okay, now go back to the previous, the map, rather.
Yes.
Okay, now looking at that, where the road, the driveway is?
Yes.
The left rectangular area?
This here.
Is there any way, because it seemed to me that was a drop off, but I don't remember.
There's a cliff.
Okay, so there's no way that the trail could go down the side of that on the outside?
Right here, you can even see how the paint's kind of bleeding off the side, it's a cliff.
So there's no way a path, a trail can be made to go onto that part rather than right down?
Not without being on our property, no.
Okay, well, but would it be possible to put a trail down to the lower section, which is below your house, so they're not walking inches from your door? See what I'm saying?
No.
Okay, here, down here instead of here?
No, because there's a cliff there, and then there's our garage. Yeah, we've got the garage, well, it's my husband's shop, really, is what it is.
Because he might be willing to do a compromise if there are trails to go down the lower part, that wouldn't visually get in your way, I just didn't know if that was possible.
I appreciate, I totally appreciate what you're saying. The problem is, is with the compromise, everybody's happy, right? Everybody gets something.
Hopefully.
Right, everybody gets something. And if there's a trail there, that obviously, what, that doesn't give us anything, that gives us potentially 2,000-plus residents and 750,000-plus tourists walking down our driveway.
Okay, now, that's what I'm saying. We, when I was out there that time, we talked about going through the woods on the trail instead of right down the front of the yard.
The only area where this strip of property is platted, that's where it's platted, there is no else, where else to walk.
But that's what I'm saying, if they could do a trail down in the lower part, that would keep them off your driveway and out of your front door.
Then they're on our property. And I understand the idea of a compromise, but what are we getting out of that compromise?
An area to put your cottage. Isn't that up in the yarded area?
Yes, ma'am. However, let me back up for a second. I think what we're forgetting to remember is that we are in this section here. I have traced the deeds back to 1884 and to the federal patent from Chester Arthur, the President of the United States. If you know anything about the history, which I'm sure that you do, and all of you do, especially you, you don't book, so I know that you do.
Yeah.
Section 10 was highly contentious, obviously, as it still is today, because some of it was conceded to the agriculturists and not part of the 320, not part of the Land Act of 1885, not part of any of that, it was given to private, private owners. What I'm telling you is, is that there is no city easement here, there is no city property here, so for us to start giving away easements, or giving up trails, or trying to compromise, we're just giving away property. I, I don't know how, I don't know how else to say it. My, my contention and my position is, my husband and my position is, is that there, the city has never, nor does it today, have any right to this property whatsoever. And if I might, if I may ask you, Alderman McClung, you said that it's a platted street, so therefore the city has jurisdiction over it, what are you basing that off of?
Well, it's historical, that's how, that's how, that's how all cities, municipalities are, that's how they're arranged, that's how they're done.
So you're saying this makes our driveway city property?
That plat, because that is a recorded plat of platted lots and access roads, streets.
Okay.
Absolutely, you bet.
Okay.
That, it, it comes under city jurisdiction.
Mr. Mitchell?
I agree, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna send just our city attorney to research the points that Ms. Bricks just made. Just because it got platted on some survey, if you go back before, before that, just because some surveyor platted it, doesn't necessarily make it, is, make it permanently correct, and we need, we ought to give this the due diligence it deserves, and I think the, our city attorney should take it up and do the appropriate research for us.
Ms. Zeller, you had your hand up there.
Well, we're not talking about Rock Street, what we were talking about before, we are just talking about that gravel driveway that goes past your house. Is that what we're, is that what's considered Magnetic Street at this point in time?
Magnetic, Magnetic is the ro, the main road up here.
Yeah, okay, I understand that.
This is Rock Street, this right here is not Rock Street.
No, well, okay, what is the, the gravel driveway that goes in the front of your house? What is that considered? Does that have a name?
It does not have a name.
Okay, it's just your driveway?
Correct.
And you've been using it as your driveway for a very long time?
Well, we haven't lived there but a year and a half, but the folks before us, and when the properties, see, these properties and these properties were owned by separate people until 1972. These two properties were fused to what we bought now in 1972, and it's been used the same way since then.
Okay, and then you made the statement that the city owns all of these streets that had been platted in 1888 or 1884, or what it is. If the city owns all of that, including Rock Street, because that's on that plat, then the city can decide whether it has any intention of ever opening that street or deciding that it's not going to use it.
I would imagine, but that's probably a Tim Weaver question.
Yeah, in other words, Parks seemed to have an awful lot of say on whether we vacated that street or not, but the truth is that they had no jurisdiction, it was the city property, and it did not belong to the owners of that property, that, that Rock Street belongs to the city, then, as does your driveway, is that the contention?
I don't believe the city owns our driveway, no, I don't believe the city even has an easement on our driveway, based on the research that I've been doing.
Okay, but that is a part of what we're talking about vacating here, your driveway.
We're not talking about vacating anything.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's why it's been so confusing.
Obviously.
Yeah.
I'm just asking the city to acknowledge that it has no rights or interest in this piece of property.
Well, yeah, that's pretty clear, I mean, the, yeah.
If, if I may.
I can't imagine the city ever wanting to turn that into a street.
If I may, these are two Parks maps that I got when I was on the Trails Committee earlier this year. And you can even see that Parks even knows that our driveway is not part of Rock Street, because on both of these maps, and I'm sorry, I'll pass these around if you want to see them, here's the old timber road that we know was there. William Evans and Francisca Massman, if you know who they were, they were the biggest timbers back in the, they owned our property at one point in time. William Evans is the one who got the patent on it. So of course there was a timber road going up to this property back here, because there was a boatload of trees up there to timber and get for, for shack, making shacks and stuff. So that timber road is what our driveway actually was, and if you look at the original plat map that Eureka Improvement Company did in the 1800s, this section wasn't even on there yet, this whole subdivision wasn't even on there yet. When it was added, this road was already there, I've got photographs from 1880s to prove it. So what happened is, is this road got cut off here, and then Rock Street was platted, and when they were fused together, you can see Parks even drew Rock Street and over this timber road. Everybody knows y'all were there, there are two roads there. Same thing with this map that they're using here. They've connected Rock Street all the way to Magnetic, even though this is the actual road that is there. It's duplicitous, there are not two roads there. So I don't know what Parks is thinking that they're going to use for a trail, but this, I mean, this is a Parks map, I didn't make this, so they full well know that there are not two roads there.
Anything else for her?
Just real, real quick, on all the research and stuff and the surveys on that, do you know if one of those surveys was a sectional, is that the word? A sectional survey?
I do, in fact. And Ms. Zeller may be able to corroborate this, I'm not sure the extent of her books, but this right here, magnetic-based survey? But this right here, Magnetic Base Survey, it was a long time ago, just called Magnetic Forty Base Survey. It's had a million names to it. This whole section, if you go into the, into John Costas Museum and look at the Eureka Improvement Company's map, is completely missing. That's why, if you look at this, there's dotted lines here on Rock Street. This ends at the section line. This is the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter. This is the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter. They're two distinctly sep, this is Clayton Edition. This is not even, to answer your question, this survey was done by A.G. Savage in 1885 and added after the fact to make this 1893 plat map. So, yes, it was separate. And actually, William Evans, when he owned this, and Francisco Massman, when they owned it, and David Bays and Louis Lloyd, they contributed to the survey. And it's, it's documented history. I mean, I'm not making this stuff up.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Thank you, Richard. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to direct the city attorney to conduct a legal review to see if the city owns the property.
I would like to add to that, 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 you know, that he get with the land attorney through the municipal league or somebody, because it's, I mean, you gotta get a real clarification from, from a land attorney that specializes in this kind of thing, because I don't think they're gonna believe you, or, or anything that the city's gonna say is gonna hold any weight unless you get somebody that, is somebody that, that supposedly knows something.
Okay, who made the original motion?
I did.
Mr. Mitchell?
James seconded, but we need to do the amendment first.
Yeah. First, we'll vote on the amendment to the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
What'd you say?
Needs to be a second on Terry's motion to amend.
Okay. So, now we need to vote on the amended motion, correct?
Correct.
With, okay, with the second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, anybody?
This is the amendment?
Yes, it's the amendment.
No, this is the motion.
Main motion now. Now, we're back to the motion.
Amended.
Oh, yes, then.
Okay, we, we had a motion. It was, we voted on the amendment. We have a positive vote on the amendment, the amended motion. So, now we go back and vote on the whole motion as amended. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Goes to Mr. Weber.
I would just like to ask that the council provide a swift timeline for Tim Weaver's opinion with this other person's opinion, because depending on his opinion and whomever else's opinion will determine whether or not we'll be initiating a federal case with the city. And I have a statute of limitations of one year on that, since I knew about it, and the clock is really ticking on us. And you know we've been tied up with this for a long time, so I really need this to be done rather quickly, please.
Then we need to amend again to say...
No, this would be, this would be another motion, be an amendment. So, Mr. Mitchell.
Go ahead and, and make a motion that the city attorney and the consulting attorney of his choice give a legal opinion by February 15th, 2014.
A second.
Any for a discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moves us, thank you, folks. It moves us on to number five.
Drive really carefully, guys. You gotta be careful.
Yeah, because it's slick and supposed to get slicker when it smells again. Moves us to number five, Discussion of Plan Commission Secrets for Vacating Property. I think y'all left that one on. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Doors open. Mr. McClung.
Okay, I mean, if, if you read through this, this is the, this is the way it's done. This is the way we do it today and what we're going through right now, exactly what, what this says. Down in number seven, it says the city will determine whether or not the street portion that lies in the north, if this the case, they've been charged 200 per lot of fair market value. That, Diane has researched that. It didn't, I mean, that doesn't show up in the ordinance, but it shows up in the old, old ordinance. But what I am going to ask that, on the, on the next agenda, or the next meeting that, that we have on the agenda to, to redo this, and go back up here to number one, where it says, it goes in about how it's done with the parks and all that, and I think the way it needs to be is that, that the person pay a, a processing fee of $200 that would go to Parks upon approval of the whole process. You know, that, the, the Parks had sent out a map defining the 320 acres, and there's city limits to the south of it, and city limits to the north of it, these, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it's not an equitable situation. You know, like here, Palpinto is, is not going to be, you know, having to chart anything, and whereas, and Nut Street may fall into it. I'm not, I'm not sure that Harmon, if we get that done, that, I don't think it does. So, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a fair way for all of it. And so, that's, you know, this, this is, this is fine, because this is the way we're doing it, or, or the layout here, but I think I want to get with Mr. Weber and try and rewrite an ordinance.
Can we base it on in-city limits only?
That's the only thing we can base it on.
But I mean, but I mean, but if we say vacating property within city limits, it will be, period. Whether it's 20 or not?
Yeah, when you're, when you're gonna, you know, some, some plots, some plots, they may have 10 lots on one side and one lot on the other side. You know, there's no equitable way to do it that way either. So, it's, I mean, it's just, it's just the side of 320. So, it'd just be a flat feet.
Would it be feasible to, because I don't know how big some of our green areas are, would it be feasible to say lots one through five would be, but if you're going over, you have to kick in?
No.
Like, I don't know how big some of these areas would be.
Well, that, that doesn't matter. I mean, just like Palpinto, it's, it's 100 feet long, basically, and 20 feet wide, or 30 feet wide, whatever it is. And the same thing with, with Nut Street.
That's what I'm saying, so nobody could actually get a huge parcel?
No, 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 it's, it's streets and alleys, that's all it is. Yeah, that's...
Strictly, okay.
Then they only get half of that, unless they own both sides of it, and it goes that way.
So, you're gonna ask at the next meeting, the attorney to turn...
Well, I think I need to get it on the agenda. That's what I wanted to do at, at, under agenda setting at the end and have it, you know, put on the agenda for the...
Well, it sounds fair.
Any for a discussion on number five? If not, we'll move along to number seven. It should be the resolution for the courthouse parking lot agreement. Yeah, okay. Resolution for the agreement on the courthouse parking lot.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Doors open.
Thank you, chairs.
Mr. DeVita.
I'd move to assign this resolution a number and by its reading signify its passage.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, stand by.
I have two copies.
You have two different. Two different, different. One's for the parking lot, one's for the office.
It's been too cold. The print's been frozen for five days. It's now melting.
The resolution number is 631. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a parking lot lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lots, binding between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as the lessie. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lot, binding between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessie, whereby the city agrees to lease the following described property. The existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse, located at 44 South Main Street, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Such parking lots presently occupying the property directly northeast and south of said courthouse, and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, first street, and curbs respectively, for a term of one year commencing on January 1, 2014, and ending at midnight on Jan, December 31, 2014.
Okay, thank you. All right, moves us on to number eight, which is the agreement, the resolution on the agreement for the city offices. Mr. DeVita.
I'd move to assign this resolution a number and to pass it by its reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a lease agreement binding between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as the lessie. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement binding between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessie, whereby said city agrees to lease 2,062 square feet of floor space for office purposes on the lowest level of the Western District Carroll County Courthouse located at 44 South Main Street in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for an initial term of up to three years, commencing on January 1, 2014, and subject to a renewal annually, no later than January 15 of that year, and thereafter, as the parties may agree.
All right, thank you. We'll take care of those. All right, that takes us out of new business into agenda setting. Mr. DeVita.
Nothing.
Mr. McClung.
Yes, I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting, redoing of, I guess it'd be redoing, section of the ordinance book, section 9.10.01 regarding vacation, alley vacations.
Who was the second?
Me. DeVita.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, anything else? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, because I forgot to put it on the agenda tonight. A 2014 budget workshop that can be conducted before, we have to approve it?
Second.
I'll be wearing the check.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, sir, that will be enough.
All right, break those out. Oh, sorry, Mr....
For Mickey? Oh, no, I'm sorry, no.
Ms. Zeller?
No.
Can we move some council comments? Mr. DeVita.
I'd just like to address the effort being put out by the people trying to keep the roads clear in Eureka Springs. There's been some criticism levied, and, you know, they're out day and night trying to keep the streets clean. I've, I've been in the area over 47 years, and, you know, there have not been many instances like this. The state went out and pre-treated all of 62, 23, twice to my knowledge, and we see what happened that, and that was with pre-treatment. It was a storm that had sleet, freezing rain, and then eight to 12 inches of snow on top of that. What has been unique about this is that it hasn't gotten above freezing for five or six days, and every night it's gotten really cold, which just refreezes everything back the same way it is. If you watch the news, New York, Minnesota, states that deal with this on a regular basis are having extreme problems. This is an epic storm, and our crews have been due diligent in trying to get out and provide the best possible service they can. It's not an easy job, and I'm thankful for all the effort they've put out. You know, this is Arkansas, folks. We just don't have that warm weather that we normally have, and this will start happening this week, and I know it could be a little touch of cabin fever, but bear with us, folks. We're doing the best job we can.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McClung.
There's not another meeting this year.
Is that right?
Not scheduled. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify, this is our only December meeting. So, everybody have a safe, happy Christmas, happy new year. Go out and have fun in the snow, and stay warm, since I can't.
Ms. Zeller?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Okay, my comments. First off, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate and do, give our respects to past council member, Richard Kelly. Mr. Kelly served for about, I think, a full two years, two terms, as a city council member, and so our sympathies and congratulations, and best wishes to the Kelly family, especially during the holidays. This is gonna be the first one of that, Mr. Kelly. So, Merry Christmas, and thank you for your service, sir, and to your family. Secondly, I don't have anything other than the fact that weather reports indicate we may get up to two more inches tonight on top of what we have, so just get ready. Get out the quilts and the blankets and plenty of water, and just get ready for it, and it's coming. A list of events coming up for the holidays is December the 14th through the 23rd, the Snow Village and Lionel Train exhibit, Carnegie Library Annex, and it'll be nightly from 5:00 to 7:00 on Saturday and Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Let me, let me clarify that. 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday. December the 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st, experience the light, live nativity at the Great Passion Play from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Drive-through light display Thursday through Sunday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. through December the 22nd. December the 13th would be the Silver Tea at the Crystal Ballroom at the... I guess that would be at the Crescent Hotel, yeah. Okay. December the 14th, from 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m., Santa in the, no, wait, okay, that was the other part of the Crystal Bar. Was 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. December the 14th. Separate issue now. Santa in the Park Basin Spring Park from 1:30 p.m. to, well, no, I guess that's on the 14th, too. 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Okay, December the 14th would be the second Saturday gallery stroll from 6:30 p.m. to 9, I'm sorry, 6:00 p.m. I can't read this, sorry. 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. All right, December the 14th, 31st Annual Christmas Tour of Homes, be 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. December the 14th, Annual Sweet Treats Cookie Tour, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. December the 14th, Ozark's Corel Christmas Concert, City Auditorium at 7:30 p.m. And if anybody needs tickets, I have some. December the 15th, John Two Holt's Christmas Concert, City Auditorium, 7:30 p.m. December the 16th, Annual Parade of Lights Christmas Parade downtown Eureka Springs at 6:00 p.m. And if I'm not mistaken, I think Ron at the auditorium is trying to get together another Christmas singing like we have been having in the past. I think it was this Friday, or next Friday, Donf? Do you remember?
Was it 20th?
The 20th, okay. So, he'll need some bodies for that one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the plan to have the first meeting in January, the second Monday, as was true this year?
That's the one thing we didn't do with Sid.
Well, we set that at our first meeting, and we just agreed that that would be our first meeting, then, yeah.
So, we're in agreement, that's the date?
Okay. Okay.
That's the date.
Works for me.
For the 13th.
13th.
January.
Or January, it's 13th, yeah.
Okay, because I think we have to have one at the first of the month to set the time, time and dates meeting. I think that has to be a.
That will be this day then, January 13th?
Okay, is, is that what y'all want to do, is just do it all at once?
Yeah, just do it all at once.
Okay, close enough. If that is the wish of, then it shall be. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
He did it.
Okay.
Woo.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.